...that the Pasadena Area Community College District will now convene in open session. There were no reportable items from closed session. At this time, trustee Salvage, would you please say the pledge?
Please stand and face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any items on, anyone who wishes to make public comment on non-agenda items? No?
We, we have three that I believe are on, oh, wait a minute, this is on an agenda. Sorry.
Okay, and I noticed I skipped item B anyway, so no, are there any introductions and recognitions?
I think there may, I think there is one that does not, okay, one indicates non-agenda, Paul Gerald.
Paul Gerald, Dr. Gerald.
Thank you very much. It's not very often I get to come and say thank you. Reading through the board packet, I noticed my separation, which gave me a little pause, and I didn't feel it'd be right to leave without a sincere thank you. I've spent 20 years here, love it, the thousands of students, faculty, staff, that have had a profound impact on me personally and professionally. It's just really, I mean, I just can't imagine not having had that experience. It's a home, it is amazing, the things we can do when we choose to focus on what we have in common, rather than what we have apart, and who benefits from that are our students, and that's what we really need to focus on. So, I thank you all tremendously for the years I've been here, the friendships, the, can I say, pain in the ass that there have been a time or two, but it's been wonderful and a sincere thank you. So, I just couldn't imagine leaving without saying that, so, thanks.
So, Paul, before you get out the door, I think we need to reciprocate a really big thank you. Now, there were a lot of years, you did a lot of great teaching, and I'm gonna be honest, I'm not privy to any of that, but we all know we had a very, very serious problem in this district, and there were a handful, I'm sure there's more than a handful, but there were a handful of core people a couple of years ago who really, really stepped up and worked to resolve the tensions and trouble that were here, and I know if we picked only a handful, you'd be one of the five, and that, that's huge, that's huge, and I'm well aware of that, so we owe you, besides what I'm sure your students would say for the first X number of years, a tremendous thank you.
I also want to say on behalf of the board how much we have all appreciated what you have done, and your fine work has not gone unnoticed, and you will be missed, but we're all going down there to surf with you, so that's great. We wish you the best of luck, Dr. Gerald. Trustee Salvage.
Yes, there's one other speaker that I believe wants to speak on non-agenda items, Martin Enricus. Is that correct, this is non-agenda?
Yes, public comment, I believe, 3A? Nonetheless, I have confirmed, page 86, it is the 50th anniversary of the Pasadena Area Community College. On April 26, 1966, voters approved the formation of the Pasadena Area Community College encompassing the school districts of Pasadena, Arcadia, La Cañada, San Marino, Temple City, and South Pasadena. Those were the original unified school districts. I have already submitted the original trusteeship for Dr. Verdian and Dr. Fellows for your perusal. I would like to talk about Reverend Monsignor Tobias English. One of Era's great sons, became a good shepherd to chill Americans. He died in late April of this, of this year, this year of our Lord, 2016. Hundreds attended his bon voyage last Tuesday, the 26th of April, 2016. Monsignor Reverend Tobias English entered eternal life. He found solace in his dying moments by being able to see the Tower of St. Andrews Catholic Church. He was a pastor there for over 20 years, and hundreds attended his service. I will read into the record his letter to the conscience of the Board of Trustees, Walter T. Shatford, of, letter of 1992 at a later time, but for now, I want to say, bon voyage, Monsignor English. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other items?
Okay, the remaining speaker cards are for item H on the agenda.
Okay. So, we are now at item D, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 6? No motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
So, moved by trustee Brown, seconded by trustee Osterling. Is there any discussion, any corrections? Hearing, I may have the advisory vote?
Aye.
So, you have your little traffic light, so don't forget to press your traffic lights. Okay, advisory vote, so all in favor, say, press your green button. Any, any, okay, so we have one abstaining, trustee Hilsman. Thanks, motion passes. May I have a motion to approve minutes of April 21?
So moved.
Wow, this is a little technical. So moved by trustee Osterling, may I have a second?
A second?
Oh, boy.
May I have a second?
A second.
Oh, trustee Brown, seconded. Is there any discussion on this? May I have the advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say, just say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Well, you know, technology is just not foolproof, is it? Okay, we are now at item E, we have approval of consent items. Are there any items that trustees wish to discuss? And I think we have a few that are also being, yeah, in revision, so we have item 222B, 230B, we have a revised version of those items. Are there any consent items that the trustees wish to pull for, for individual discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull agenda item S.
Which one?
And there's three items, but we can discuss them all as a single item because they relate to the same issue, and that's item B 160321, 160322, and 160271, and those all relate to the SBDC.
Okay, let's see. So, we're pulling item 30S for additional discussion. May I have a motion to approve all remaining items except 30S?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Salvage, seconded by trustee Hilsman. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Push your button, any, any abstentions? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Yay, those lights are working, okay. Trustee Osterling, 30S.
This is the upward bound trip, and this is just a discussion item. I had raised a question about the vehicles and the insurance, and the, the purpose of my questions was, in abundance of caution, I wanted to remind all of us what happened a year or two ago on one of these campus trips in the summer where they, where there was an unfortunate accident, and I just want to make sure that the, I understand that PCC is not providing the transportation, but I would, it's being provided by the outside service provider, Outward Bound Adventures, but I would still ask if we could just make sure that the vehicles that they're using are, are safety-checked and that entity has adequate levels of insurance.
We do make sure of that, and they do, they must show us their insurance coverage before we can hire them.
Okay, thank you.
Does that conclude the questions?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to move to approve that item?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by trustee Osterling, seconded by trustee Salvage. May I have the advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we are now on item...
Yeah, I had three other items that I...
Oh, okay, so the two, so three B items, I'm sorry.
Correct, three B items.
Trustee Osterling?
And I'd be happy to discuss those all at once. These all relate to the SBDC, and really, these are questions that pertain to my new status as a trustee, and I'm still going up the learning curve about exactly how the SBDC works, and I understand that some of the money is funded by the SBA, but we're also funding money for this, and I understand that we provide consulting services to small businesses in the area, but my question is, by the nature of these contracts, it seems like we're some subcontracting out all or, or a lot of those services to third-party providers, so I just want to get an understanding of the amount of work and services that we, PCC, provides versus subcontracting it out to, to other consultants.
I'm going to ask Dean Solomon Davila to please provide us the answers to trustee Osterling's questions.
We do provide some college match funding, to offer dollar, we have to at least match 50%, or 100% of what's provided, I think we match more than that. I think with the augmentation to our budget, as discussed a couple of months ago, it's almost one to two, so it's, we've been growing that. Before, it was actually kind of the other way around in terms, it was, we were putting in more than what was being provided by the SBDC grant. Most of the funding that we actually provide is to leverage our own staffing here at PCC, and that's our director of the SBDC, Salvatore Scummo. The funds that are provided by the grant are exclusively primarily for the contractors. So, PCC actually itself does not pay from its budget, the contractors itself, it's all the grant funds that we provide. The director that we have here is our staff, not only oversees the contractors, but also oversees other programs that help out students, student groups, we have our 3D startup, our business pitch fest opportunity, there are student groups operate at least once a semester, which our director oversees, and then the summer, we're doing a sort of a contract education for multiple businesses, where there's a four-fee basis that we're trying to augment our budgets for SBDC, of which our director oversees as well. So, our director, which is the staffing that we provide, or the funding that we provide, oversees multiple aspects of the SBDC, while the contractors are the grant funding operations. But if you want more clarification, the actual contractors themselves, I can invite Dr. Salvatore Scummo to explain a little bit further about their particular role.
Okay, thank you. There's no need to do that at this time.
I had one follow-up on that. You had sent us the copies of some, a selection from the contract that refers to the sub-recipient and the clients. I assume that PCC is the sub-recipient, is that correct, in the contract?
Of the contract for the Long Beach?
Yes, the Long Beach contract that you sent us.
Correct, we're the sub-grantee, correct.
Okay, and the clients then are whom? They are the businesses who are seeking these consulting services?
I believe it's the businesses that we're serving with the contractors.
Okay, and, and is there some threshold in terms of how much of this consulting, how much consulting service you have to provide to these, to the businesses?
Threshold in terms of number?
In other words, is there, are there some metrics for?
Absolutely.
Okay, but, but in a quantitative sense, I mean, do you need a certain amount of hours that you have to provide?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
If you want further explanation, I can have Salvatore.
You know, we don't need to do it now, but I'm interested in knowing how that works, and I know we've, you and I have had conversations before.
It's a highly regulated system for which every single session, every single hour, even the notes after meeting with clients have to be all documented into a centralized base system.
You have my deepest sympathy, and I, and I, and maybe you can, a little sympathy for the new trustees here, trying to understand the thicket. Thank you so much.
We welcome you to SBDC if you would like to visit us.
Thank you.
We'll take you up on that, thank you.
So, I did have a follow-up question also on the SBDC, so Dr. Verdian, I saw that we are now renewing the contract for the SBDC, so I guess the question is, I know we had talked about expanding the SBDC, and possibly we would want to be a regional hub, so is that still something that we intend to do in the future, and if so, will we be seeing a plan for that and that growth? Because I think we're still waiting for that master plan on the SBDC.
This is something that we still intend to do, and Dean Solomon Davila, together with Salvatore Scummo, are working right now on that plan, and also on surveying the whole region to find out what it is that we have, and what we will need to be able to better serve this region. And my understanding from Dean Davila is that we should be getting the results of the survey in a very near future.
Thank you, good work. Okay, so, were those items all?
So, yeah, I would move to approve those items, and I'd second that, yeah.
So moved by trustee Osterling, seconded by trustee Hilsman. May I have an advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, press your green button.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain, that motion passes unanimously. I think you're taking more time to press these buttons, aren't you? Okay, we are now on item F, authorization to transmit the third quarterly financial status report, Dr. Verdian.
That we submit the third quarter financial report, and this is just routine submittal that we do on a quarterly basis.
I'll move approval.
So moved by trustee Martin.
And I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Brown. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are now at item G, you have a revision in your package, authorization, certification of signatures, Dr. Verdian.
This is again, a routine certification of signatures for the college.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by trustee Brown, seconded by trustee Hilsman. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item H has been pulled, but I understand we have a speaker, is that correct, Dr. Salvage?
We have one, two, three, four people who indicated they wanted to speak on item H.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, we are pulling just because we realized after this item was in the packet, that not all of the constituencies of the college had a chance to review it, so, but why don't we go ahead and hear the speakers? So, Dr. Salvage, please call up the speakers.
The first, let's see, they did come in in order. First speaker is, I'm not quite sure, the last name is Baltarian.
Madam President, Superintendent and Board of Trustees, I'm Agbo Baltarian, I'm the president of the Armenian Students Association here in PCC. Armenian genocide is something very important for us, for the Armenian students here in the campus. It's a big fact, it's a big part of our culture, and traumatic, I would say. As students, we have many Armenians in this school, we have more than 150 people signed up in the club, and they're not only Armenians. We have many, many non-Arimians who are interested about the Armenian culture, and this is one of the biggest facts in our, in our history. It's, the Armenian genocide has not been approved for, from US yet, but 44 states have approved it. So, the message that we're trying to cross is that Armenian, the Armenians, this culture is something very, very, very touching, the Armenian genocide is very touching and very traumatic for all of us, and we're trying to, to spread out, spread the word out to all the students, and we're also doing that by having events and lectures about the genocide. We had, we're being outside at the campus, we're being at the quad, we're being in lecture halls, we're being everywhere, we're trying to spread the word. And we have many non-Arimians, including our advisor, who are very interested to learn about the Armenian history and the cultures, and this is something very important for And like Hitler said, who, who today, who today remembers the Armenian genocide? We do, we're here, we're approved, and we appreciate your time.
The next speaker is Felicia Kadimian. You will have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent and Board of Trustees, my name is Felicia Kadimian, and I am with the Armenian National Committee of America. I do, I'm aware that this item has been pulled, however, I would like to discuss this item and to allow you the opportunity to learn more about the Armenian genocide resolution and why it is important here at PCC. I know that the Board of Trustees historically has passed this resolution, and we greatly thank you for that. As you can see, many of our students are also here in attendance, and the Armenian Student Association has taken a very proactive role here on campus, as well as within the community, educating about the Armenian genocide, human rights education, and overall education within the community as a whole in Pasadena. I was actually honored to be here this past April 19, where the Armenian Student Association, along with the Armenian Two class, hosted an event here on campus where they dedicated to the Armenian genocide. We had students that were both of Armenian descent and non-Armenian descent, that were reading Armenian words, that were singing, playing Armenian instruments, reading poetry, having every different part of the Armenian identity expressed, and it was really phenomenal seeing not only Armenians doing this, but also non-Arimians. The Armenians that actually spoke were actually doing more research, and they actually said, I learned more about my culture, I learned more about the hidden Armenians, which aren't really discussed about. It was really phenomenal to really just see how the students were taking such a proactive stance. So I do know that this item has been pulled, however, I would encourage it during the next meeting, that we do pass this resolution, as you can see, many of the students have taken this proactive stance, and we as the AS, Armenian National Committee of America, also do support this resolution. As I spoke last year, we also do have the America We Thank You campaign, where we can also provide education and support for you as PCC, as well as the students, and how we can educate all individuals about what has happened with the Armenian genocide, human rights education, and ending the cycle of genocide for all. Thank you.
The next speaker is Anthony, I believe this is Innabi.
Sorry.
One more after this. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Madam and Superintendent, my name is Anthony Nabi, and I represent the Armenian Students Organization. However, I am not Armenian like what they said, members are Armenian or non-Armenian, I am an Arab descendant, but the reason I talk about this is that Armenians, during the Armenian genocide, which was a horrible time for them, the, we are trying to showing them, we, we're not just trying to showing Americans this, but we're trying to showing those who have ancestors, not ancestors, but those who survived, an idea as to what we show the Armenian genocide. We show them with an idea of compassionate, we show them ideas of what the Armenian students have, and we are trying to, every, like, on, as April, we are trying to give a commencement to the genocide, and what we're trying to do every April is, instead of just a couple of days, we want to give those an idea of how it, how it was shown, how we can have an idea to end it, and have a way of giving an idea to those that this, this is, this is a really serious issue, not just to Armenians, but also to everybody else, because if they were, if they were in the same position, I think that they would agree that this was a horrible thing, and that we should work to stop it. That is what we are trying to do, and that is what we're trying to show into the students of PCC, and also to other, other organizations like the, the Armenian, Armenian Association from the other school, and that is what we're trying to show, thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is Mikhail Matosyan. You will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mikhail, I'm a student, speaking here in favor of you all passing the resolution, I think, next week, or when it gets, gets back, back on the agenda, but as you all know, the Armenian genocide did take place 101 years ago. It started in 1915 in the Ottoman Empire, when driven by xenophobia and racism, unfortunately, the Ottoman government targeted and exterminated 1.5 million Armenians and other minorities, including Assyrians, Arabs, Greeks, and it's still not recognized by the Turkish government today, Turkey being the successor state to the Ottoman Empire. And even though it might seem like this is a issue, a geopolitical issue, that's thousands of miles away, it's very real and present and happening today for us, Armenian students, Armenian youth, the Pasadena Armenian community, because of that lack of recognition, that lack of closure, that comes from the Republic of Turkey, and for that matter, the US government, which still hasn't recognized the genocide. So because of that lack of closure, we're still living with that trauma, that intergenerational trauma that's passed down from our great-grandparents to our grandparents to us, the survivors of the genocide who moved out of the Ottoman Empire and went all over the world, and that's the reason why we're here today, why we live here in Los Angeles, is because Armenians from the Ottoman Empire went on to the Middle East, Syria, Lebanon, different countries, and eventually found refuge in the United States, and finally Pasadena. So we're living with that trauma that, and the memory of the genocide that our grandparents, our great-grandparents passed on down to us, and that's why it's still very real to us. That's the same reason that drives groups like the Pasadena Community College, Armenian Students Association, the ASA, to work on education efforts, to have asylum protests on campus, to put on an assembly that happened two weeks ago to mark the 101st anniversary on April 24th. And that's the same reason, that's something that also drives us to relate to other communities. We're not just alone in this, it's not just an Armenian issue, we really, we relate to other communities that have experienced genocide, African-Americans with the Rwandan or Darfur genocide, Jewish communities with the Holocaust, those are experiences that we can relate to. And because of that, that's why we're fighting for recognition, for our families, for us to reach closure, and that's why I ask you to please approve and approve the resolution the next time it's brought up. That, I think that would be a very strong statement to show that you, the Board of Trustees, as you have in the past, stand with Armenians, you stand with the PCC, ASA, the Pasadena Armenian community in general, and understand our community experience. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you.
Do the board members wish to make a comment? Yeah, I just want to thank you all for coming, but, and I also want to apologize to you that we pulled the, we had to pull the item, and as I said, it was just procedural because not all constituencies had had a chance to review it. But I, we'll work with Dr. Verdi and I expect this will be brought back at the next board meeting. So thank you very much. As you know, the board had passed the last resolution last year and we're all very sympathetic to the plight that occurred with the Armenians. So thank you very much for coming and once again, I apologize. Okay, item I, resolution, resolution number 551, commencement special recognition of the community, Dr. Verdi.
It's a recommendation to recognize the Lee's family as part of the commencement special recognition for the community and the Lee's family special recognition award will be presented to the family on commencement day, celebrations right before commencement.
May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Trustee Salvage, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Brown. Is there any discussion by the board?
This, this was the, uh, family which had the ceremony when they dedicated the, uh...
That's correct.
That's the family, yes.
Over by the boon garden, yeah, we have a plaque dedicated to them, yes, lovely family. May I have the advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, press your green button. None opposed, this motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item I, oh, J, adopt the resolution 552, commencement special recognition of campus.
This one is another recommendation for the commencement special recognition for a campus organization or body or individual, and in this case, the choice is on the Math Success Center. And again, the Math Success Center will be recognized on commencement day prior to commencement activities.
Excellent program, good choice.
We'll move approval.
So moved by Trustee Brown, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Hilsman, is there any discussion by the board?
Yes, just one quick comment. I understand that the Math Success Center does wonderful work for our students and, and I'm certain they're deserving of the commendation. I would only request that if we could put in some of the specific number of students they serve or some of the successes they have to really point out why they're getting that commendation, it would, it would make it more specific.
Your point is well taken, Trustee Osterling, we will ensure that we include this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Osterling. So any further discussion? May I have the advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, press your green button. This motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we are now at the information items, so item K, Superintendent President's Report, Dr. Verdi.
Well, President Wa, members of the board and the public, I have a wonderful piece of news to start my report. Right as I was leaving my office to come over here at about 5:15, I was informed that in the next two days, this information would be made public. Pasadena City College will be recognized on June the 2nd in Sacramento by Secretary of State Alex Padilla and legislators for the work that Pasadena City College has done in the field of their associate degrees for transfer. We will be one, we will be one of a very small group of colleges that will be made public in the next two, three days. And we will of course be there to be recognized on June the 2nd at 5:30 in the evening and the invitation will be sent to all the trustees and all the parties concerned at the college for that day. And that is known as the keeping the promise, going the distance on transfer reform, that's what we will be recognized for. I'm also pleased, I hope that Sheila doesn't take this the wrong way, because also, I was going to mention only two recipients of the awards that the Academic Senate awarded on Friday evening, is that okay?
Yes.
Because I, I don't want to mention all of them, I just want to give you the opportunity to mention the rest. I want to publicly recognize the, this year's winners of the RISA Award, an award which is given annually to recognize exceptional contributions to the college. And I will recognize the outstanding teacher, the committee chose chemistry professor Dr. Gillian Bladdy, who has gained recognition for her engagement with students in creative ways. And I will also recognize the Outstanding Support to Education Award, which this year was given to Carol Calandra of the Veterans Resource Center for her unflagging service to student veterans at PCC. Congratulations to both of this year's winners and Sheila will mention the other winners later in this, this afternoon. And, well, maybe I should also mention that there were two unsung heroes. No, I would not, I'll leave that to you. We must also recognize our speech and debate team, which had an enormously successful performance at the national championship recently. Two of our students, Dante Chambers and Jesse Rogers, took first prize in their categories and our entire team was ranked fifth overall in the nation, a major achievement for this hard-working team. As you know, we are in the process of hiring 50 full-time faculty and around 10 also administrators and more than 35 or so classified staff. As of right now, we have more than 15 faculty offers made. We have also offered several administrators' positions and all those names will be coming to the board and once the board approves the appointment, we will be informing the college community. At this time of the year, I am pleased to report that I have attended many ceremonies recognizing the work of our students. And I am proud to say that our students stand out for the tenacity, for their hard work and for really succeeding and transferring to top-notch institutions in the state and in the nation. I want to thank the faculty for their hard work in preparing our students, I want to thank our classified staff for the support that they give our students, and administration for the support they give faculty and staff and students in the work that they do. Paul Jarrell, I want to recognize Dr. Jarrell's work also and we thank you for the work you've done and we wish you all the best as you move to Santa Barbara City College as the Executive Vice President for Instruction and Student Services. No matter where you go, Dr. Jarrell, just remember that once a Lancer, you will always be a Lancer. And we wish you all the best as you start your career with Dr. Anthony Beebe, who was appointed, as a matter of fact, this morning, as the new Superintendent President of Santa Barbara City College. And I will also remind everybody that this Friday, we have commencement festivities at the college at 7 o'clock and my understanding is that we don't know what the weather will be like this Friday, but if we go by the weather reports we've had, Southern California would have been flooded by now with all the rains we would have received from El Nino. So I'm pretty sure that Friday will be fine and we will be able to have our commencement at the Jack Robinson Stadium, but if it does happen that it rains, we have rain plans and we will make the decision at 12 o'clock on Friday. And congratulations to everybody, to our graduates and to everyone. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Verdi. This time, we are now on item L, announcements by shared governance representatives and the Board of Trustees, and we will start with President Morales.
Hi, everyone, and good evening. First of all, we are done with AS elections and I am very proud to say that we have a great team full of energy for our next year. And I know they'll be great leaders and make sure that our student voices will be represented, so I'm very happy to see that. I am also glad to say that the next AS president is Julia Russo. She is actually my current Vice President of Student Services and I'm very glad to say that she's also hosting our last event, Relaxation Week, which is going fantastic. We see students coming back and forth for Scantrons, little snacks, because again, students do forget to eat on finals week, so they're very happy to see that. Also working together with Psych Services and as my goal was this year to build relationships between our departments and us as students, we are ending the same thing, which I'm very glad to see that. Also, I want to congratulate to all our Lancers that are graduating this Friday, I'm very honored to say that I'll be up there and making sure that it will run well, so I, as Dr. Verdi said, it will not be raining this Friday, let's, let's be positive. Thank you.
Thank you, President Morales, Ms. Cantoraro.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to update you on a couple of things that we're working on right now. This week, we're reading the student scholarship applications, we got about 21 applications and we're, we have a team of people going through those, so we should have that, the scholarship winner soon. We're also in the process of our board elections and it looks like we'll have a full board, but we haven't got to the point of counting ballots yet, so we'll give you an update after we do that. We're also working on professional development activities, we're preparing for the Close to Campus Classified Day, which is going to be held up at the Altadena Town and Country, and we're also sending representatives to the Classified Leadership Institute, which is in Ventura in June. So we have a team of about 10 people that are going up there and we're really excited and getting everything ready for those events and just getting ready for the end of the year as well. We have our general meeting at the end of June where we'll make all the announcements for scholarship winners and whatnot, so we look forward to getting back to you with that information soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Futter.
Yeah, thank you. On behalf of the Management Association Board and the entire membership, I'd like to echo the sentiment that was expressed by the members of the board here and by Dr. Verdi in thanking Paul Jarrell for all of the work that he's done. You've seen him in working in different capacities, he's been a Vice President of the Management Association Team and he's a calm and stable and solid presence and his, his work and his commitment and his collegiality, to be sure, will be missed by all of us. And I came to know him way too late in my career and I, I recognize that he's a friend of mine, I hope he feels the same way about me. So thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Professor Rose.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Verdi, for not stealing all of my thunder. So yes, I would like to thank everyone who came out and supported the Academic Senate at their banquet and particularly the Foundation, Bobby and Chris McPeak and the wonderful work that they do. We had 140 people attend this year, we sold out and we had amazing representation from all constituents across the campus, so thank you to our management and classified staff who also attended and also to members of the board and our executive team. Thank you very much. So the rest of the winners, the unsung hero, we had two winners this year, Graciela Caringella from Human Resources and Linda Mayo from Math, who was retiring this year, so that was particularly poignant. And then Ralph Story, Dorothy Potter from the Library won our Ralph Story Award. We had two new awards this year, the Most Valuable Adjunct, which is an award we're really happy to have launched this year. Vanessa Schultz from Social Science and also Harold Martin, who teaches our Boots to Books Program for our veterans, won that award. And then the President's 10+1 Award, Armando Duran was recognized for his work with the ADT degrees. And then our curriculum team, Janice Dwyer and Anna O'Gaz from Counseling, Lyman Chaffey from Math and Liz Wood, our classified person, who work on curriculum, were recognized for their work. So thank you all.
Thank you, Professor Rose. Trustee Osterling.
We have lots of things to celebrate and recognize in the month of May and of course, graduation's coming up on Friday, but besides that, I learned that May is Veterans Appreciations Month and we know how many veterans attend PCC and, and also are serviced by our Veterans Resource Center, so I just want to recognize them this month. I'm also told that yesterday was Teacher Appreciation Day and I believe this is Teacher Appreciation Week and thank you to all of our teachers who make it possible for the student success, which we'll, we'll see culminate on Friday. And, um, Trustee Wa, I'm also told that it is Asian Pacific Heritage Month. So I want to recognize our Asian Pacific students and I know the, that Trustee Wa has been very actively involved in the API, Asian Pacific Islanders, so I want to commend you for your work. Lastly, I attended the CCCT this past weekend, the California Community College Trustees Conference, and learned a lot, but I'm just going to make mention of one item, there was a tremendous presentation on OER, Open Education Resources. And there's actually a lot more resources that are available to us already and we need to create more to help make a community college or a university education more affordable for our students by reducing the cost of, of, of the educational materials, the books. And I brought that to the attention of Trustee Hilsman because I know he's particularly passionate about this and I'd like to see him and those on the campus work very hard to, um, make the open education resources available here for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Osterling. Trustee Martin.
Just thank you to Sheila and the Academic Senate, my wife and I thoroughly enjoyed the ceremony and the awards and a lovely night.
Thank you. Trustee Salvage.
I attended the Scholarship Award Program for the Math and IT Department and we had an awful lot of pretty impressive math and IT students who were recognized, but there was one thing in particular and the name of the competition slips my mind, but...
Was that the AMATIC one?
No. No. There was a, there was a competition which is open to colleges and...
I think Dean Starberg can tell us?
Starberg, yes. No.
Okay, okay, 500...
The Putnam Exam?
The...
Was it, was it the William Lowell Putnam Exam? That's the, the one that is usually done by universities. I think we're the only community college that participates in that exam.
Yeah, okay, I didn't remember that as the name, but in any case, we were the only community college out of 500 entrants and we came in 81st. So we beat out math, 419, right? So we beat out 419 four-year colleges and universities in this competition and I understand that our top performer on our team was in the top 10% of all of that. So, uh, very impressive. I'd like to also mention that we're kind of wrapping this up a bit early compared to most board meetings, so everybody, as soon as we adjourn, you can run over to Westerbeck Recital Hall and you can catch the latter part of the student film exhibition that the Visual and Performing Arts people are putting on. And tomorrow night, in the same location, we have a brass ensemble recital. In the evening.
Thank you. Let me start with Trustee Bahn.
So there's a lot of excitement over commencement, even as students are in the middle of finals. Student life and activity remains busy as this semester comes to an end and preparations for the new semester begin. As President Irving mentioned, the AS elections are over and so the new student trustee, I want to congratulate her, even though she's not here, but her name is Nuna Garipian, congratulations to her. And also, next Thursday, here in the Cribbing Lounge at 7:00 PM, there will be an LA County Supervisor Forum, and so I encourage everyone to come. Also, congratulations to Trustee Wa on her Democratic Delegate nomination this last Saturday or Sunday.
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 Thank you, Trustee Bahn, and Trustee Bahn is actually going to be helping, the students will be moderating the LA County Supervisors Forum on the 12th, so hopefully everyone will be there. Trustee Brown.
Is that a forum of the candidates?
Yes, it's a forum of the candidates.
And that's next Thursday?
It's Thursday and it's being cosponsored with the League of Women Voters and our PCC students, so... Trustee Brown.
I'll report.
Trustee Hilsman.
Uh, well, just thanks to Trustee Bahn for her service and enjoyed working with her. I don't know much, how much longer your tenure lasts, but congratulations on, on the service. I also just, I'd put a plug in for the Supervisors Forum as well, this is a, a race where there's been incumbent in that seat for many, many years. This is a, a race where there's been incumbent in that seat for many, many years, so it's going to be a change and it'll be very important and have a great impact on our community and the college as well. So it's good to be informed about it. It's going to be an interesting election year, as you all probably realize.
Thank you, Trustee Hilsman. So as was reported out, we had the, the League Conference this past weekend and there were a number of really great workshops. But, you know, I wanted to, to say, I think Trustee Salvage and I attended the Board Chair Workshop and we had a lot of really good information that we want to bring back to the other trustees. Also notable was the General Counsel to the Chancellor is now promoted to the President of the Foothill Deansa College. And so she is the first Vietnamese-American college president in the nation, so that was something for us to celebrate apropos during APM Week. And on the 25th, so two weeks ago, we had the LA County School Trustees Meeting here and I want to thank Trustee Bonn for participating as a student voice on the Workforce Program. And we also had the elections and Trustee Osterling is elected as the LACSTAD Director for 2016-17, so congratulations. All of the, the nominations or the candidates for the League, the CCC that our board recommended, all of the incumbents were elected back to the CCC. In addition, Mary Figueroa of Riverside Community College was elected and Ken Brown of El Camino was elected. That concludes my report. Oh, well, no, and let me report that the officers for the CCC were elected. So Doug Otto of Long Beach, Anne Ransford of Glendale, Jim Moreno of Coast, and Brent Hasty of Yuba. So those are the new officers of the trustee board. And that concludes my report.
Were there any PCC trustees that were elected or re-elected to the board? He's your straight man.
Yeah, I paid Trustee Osterling. So thank you all for voting for me and yes, I was re-elected back to the CCC.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we are looking at the item M, the proposed future board meeting dates. May 18th, we will be changing that to a study session.
Hold study session, May 18th, yes.
Okay, and no other changes? Okay, so any, okay, so everyone is good with that? Are there any proposed future agenda items? Any items to come on the agenda? Okay, at this time, we will adjourn.